Agenda tonight, will I have the chance to speak then, or should I do it now?
Would you like to wait until you're on the agenda?
That's what I was asking.
Why don't you do it now?
Sure. So Jeff Smith, upper Church Street. I have some concerns about the way this town is being managed right now. There was supposed to be a personnel committee meeting tonight. There hasn't been one in weeks or months. And some important topics are supposed to come up. I'm concerned about what the status is of our new town accountant. And why the town administrator left out two thirds, three quarters of the hiring committee in her comments in the last meeting. Also, I'm concerned about the contract that was signed without authorization. And that's the subject of my open meeting complaint. I understand that there was some talk about my complaint having to do with decorum and the insult, which it does. But the main thrust of the complaint is about the law breaking that happened with not having proper authority when the town administrator signed that contract. And the legal and the financial ramifications. I'm also concerned that we still have yet to have a meeting, joint meeting with the finance committee and the select board to go over all the discrepancies from the town budget from the town meeting that we had. I have a report from the finance committee and still have never seen any of the topics about the discrepancies addressed. And I think that there needs to be a meeting for that. I'm concerned that the chair of this board doesn't have access to his email and isn't reading email, isn't being helped by the town administrator to access his email. And therefore, things just aren't getting done. And it shows in our town. And I think that these things should be addressed if you would tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. The meeting of the personnel committee is scheduled. And the joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the finance committee is scheduled. So that's going to be happening in the next several weeks. I am slow to learn computers. As long as Mr. Tinker forwards to me anything I might not get, I'll get everything that I want. So I appreciate you learning about it.
Can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
My personal computer is going through the glitch right now. So I'm just going to set up the iPad and I'll be checking emails. Just didn't send me the email, the link and everything this week. So I think I'm up to speed.
Okay. All right. So I like that. Yeah. Thank you though. Anybody else? Anne?
Anne Barnes from Ruggles Hill Road in Hardwick. I would like to get an answer from Justine about where she is with rebidding the townhouse grant. And what the walkthrough dates and bid opening would be. It's, it could have been let out. We've known since the end of August that this has to be rebid. And so it's time and money are being lost. The prices of aluminum gutters, for instance, are going up. It will be, it won't get as much for our money.
So we are rebidding that. I have worked with Joe from CMRPC. As you know, you called him last week. Him and I spent a lot of time here in the office going through it. I know you had sent them some information regarding the person who came out and looked at everything. I can't remember the guy, the gentleman's name, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. So we were looking at that. We were looking at the contract. We're not losing money. We have the contract through the end of the fiscal year. And everything's getting rebid. So that's where that is. Which I already told you, we were, I have to finish the procurement documents for that, for the rebidding. And thank you for sending the dates along that you were available for a walkthrough. I did get your email and I'm just, I haven't plugged them in yet. So when I look at my calendar and look at the dates you gave me, I'll go from there. So thank you.
It's, the prices of everything are going up. And the aluminum tariffs. So we need to get this out.
You do. You need to move on it. Turn it up.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Do we have a rough schedule of when that's going to happen?
I don't have that for you tonight. I worked on it last week, but I need to plug in the dates and stuff and look at the calendar and stuff because things have to go into combines with a certain timeframe and an essential register. And it has to go for a certain day. So I need to look at the calendar.
All right. You can get back to us maybe this week?
Yeah, by the time we meet in two weeks, it'll be posted.
Okay. Mr. Zenny?
Bill Zenny, Turkey Street. Can I check in with the board just for a minute here about that quabbin legislation that is of interest to us? You're all on the email list. Well, Jeff, you're not, I don't think, but.
We have a Zoom coming up.
Yeah, that's what I just wanted to check up on. And I'm not sure exactly, you know, what to dictate we should do. But Monday, 2:00. You know, the last, the last one was a little embarrassing. Because, you know, they, they send around a doodle poll and then there's like seven people on the call. I think we might have had three people on the call ourselves. So that impressed Joe. That, you know, there was good representation from Hardwick, right?
Yeah.
But it really embarrassed me that, you know, a lot of other towns weren't represented. So part of the charge from the last one was, okay, we're going to do another doodle poll. It's going to be Monday, now the 21st. And other towns have the responsibilities to chase their neighbors, who's willing to go chase their neighbors, right? So some of them agreed to do it. But really, it's, it's all about a draft, one and a half page letter that they're trying to get a grip on, right? That we're all happy with. So that we can all then have our towns, like our boards, our select boards, or whatever boards, adopt the letter, so to speak, and sign it, or be willing to sign on. So I was kind of feeling like, boy, I hope we don't have another Zoom session on Monday where only seven people show up. Plus, if we do, it would be nice if we had our thoughts together on whether we think we're willing to go with the draft language, or if we have suggestions to tune it, right? So I don't know if you guys have any thoughts on what we should do about it. And I'm willing, over the next few days, to collaborate. I don't know that I have any strong opinions that the letter is or isn't great, but we should all look at it together.
Mr. Chair? Let me ask you a question. When we got off that call, the last one, I thought I heard Senator Comerford saying that she was going to add something to it. Was, was that your understanding as well? So I read, I read that through that draft. When we got off the call, I thought she was making tweaks to it. She wanted to, so I was, thought we'd get something.
That could be. I know that the most recent email from her staffer, Elena, basically said, hey, the meeting will be on the 21st at 2:00. And here is the link to the drafts. So I assume those must be the most recent versions, right?
I read the first version.
And I, you know, there's three things there, but the thing that is most important, I think, is just us giving them feedback on whether we think this draft town letter is okay.
Right.
You know?
Yep.
I was fine with the first, the draft that I read, the original that she sent around when we were getting ready for that meeting.
Yeah, so I didn't know if you guys were okay with it or not. But, you know, maybe we should check in the next couple of days. Or, or Monday morning, you know, at least in time for this 2:00 Zoom. So that we're confident about what we tell them. I would imagine our select board would probably be willing to sign on to such an important letter. We should just make sure it's got what we want in it.
Yeah, I was happy with what you're, you're holding there and be happy to sign.
Yeah, it also means though, that it's asking them, we ask that you invite representatives from our municipalities to join one of your forthcoming meetings to discuss our efforts. That's, that is us towns asking the Mass Water Resources Authority, hey, can we attend a meeting? So that we can speak. So we should be sure if we really want to go and speak, that at least two or three of us will go. Just my thoughts out loud.
All right, and that's a trip to Deer Island or wherever they hold this meeting?
Yeah.
Just so people realize it?
Yeah, I think they're in the east mostly. I don't think they come out here too often. But this is very, obviously, I don't have to convince you all how important this is to get our towns more money.
Bill, you like going?
Oh, I feel like definitely don't. That's what the board wants. Yeah, I have no problem.
I was a little disappointed when you and I went to West End and nobody else went.
Oh, we went.
We went, yeah. But I mean, where's the rest of the army? There's, you know, eight or nine towns around Florida.
Well, there were a lot of people that testified through Zoom and did an excellent job. You know? And they were, they were very articulate and made very good points. The whole thing is, is, is getting the message out and continuing to just bring attention to it.
Yeah, well, I was just trying to speak up and keep it on our radar.
Well, it'd be great to somehow put pressure on the Boston to have these meetings out here, have a meeting out here, walk around out there.
That's part of the request too, is put more representation from the West End.
Yeah. And a meeting so that people in the West End can get to it easily. A lot of people aren't going to go to Boston, Deer Island.
One ask was to add another representative to the Mass Water Resources Board from the West.
From the West.
Not everything inside the Beltway.
Yeah.
Anyway, thanks.
Thank you, Bill.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, can I ask, Bill? Or make a suggestion? Since, regretfully, on all of these things, it's usually one or two people who end up spearheading and then dragging all the other people kicking and screaming across the line. Would it behoove the situation to try and get a local meeting here of the, and invite the seven towns together to try to put pressure on the other six towns?
So that was done. Justine was part of helping organize that. I think Selectman Valmont was involved, Eric Fleming was involved. There was a meeting where all the towns came here and was hosted in Hardwick.
Okay, when was that?
A year and a half ago.
Yeah.
Something like that.
February?
Senator Comerford came, Senator Durant came, maybe Representative Saunders might have been there, I can't remember. And it was all about this to get this started.
Maybe, maybe it needs to have another.
Yeah.
I'll make cookies. Food brings people.
Mr. Cole?
Thank you. I do have several things, none should take very long. I think they're worth mentioning or asking though. First, maybe this is the smallest thing, but on the select board calendar, I'm asking Justine this. It mentions Tuesday, November 25th as one of your board dates, but it's not a Tuesday after a Monday holiday, unlike the other Tuesdays that you've scheduled. We're, I was scheduling for the planning board and then I noticed that this is there. Of course, it's not on the calendar because there's no calendar holder for select board meetings. But I referred to this list and I see we have a conflict. And then I'm hearing that night, we can't use the same room, obviously. So I'm just wondering, is that indeed, is that a mistake? Or did you set a Tuesday meeting when it didn't follow a holiday? That's my first idea.
So like I said earlier, Bill, I'm going to have to take a look at the calendar when I'm sitting at my desk and I'll get back to you.
Okay, and then it's in, it's on this page?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Then I can schedule the hearing that's coming up. Continue? Next thing, and maybe we'll deal with this as it comes up on the agenda, which is fine. I had a couple of thoughts about open meeting law complaints, also about the Kierstan Solar lease that I mentioned before. Those are still on the agenda and we'll have a chance to address those in a bit. Thank you. I know also on the agenda is, is the, are some appointments for the, for different commissions, places that we need volunteers to step up. And it's good, good to see when they do. But I have the suggestion that it's way beyond time to update what we have, which says appointments by the select board for fiscal year 24. It's a, I know later we're going to be looking at historical. It's got five persons on there, not mentioning vacancies or whatnot, or some resignations. So people don't know as they look at this that they're needed. Master Plan Steering Committee, there's five people who are no longer on there and a couple that are, none of those are mentioned there. I think it would be good if we, this is just a PDF that I think Julie could fix anytime we gave her a new one. I would think it'd be a good idea to have anybody, have somebody update this, put it all on there with terms that meant something. There's this disclaimer on there from the old days, I guess, which says, if your term's up, you're still on there, you know? You know, maybe, maybe this would be a little, would be more useful for people looking where there's places they could help and seeing who to contact about any of it. It's not a big job, I think. Maybe some could just communicate with each, each, just look at it and talk to the boards and see who's current and.
So we have done that. And we have an updated one.
Where's that?
It's, where it's ongoing. I don't know if you've looked at the front page of the website lately, but we did, first of all, website needs to be definitely, it's bad. However, we did put a thing where there's volunteer opportunities next to employment opportunities. So we are going to be moving, because right now, if you want to volunteer, you have to go to the employment opportunities and then click something else. And that's just ridiculous. So what we've done is we've put another thing right on the main page for volunteer opportunities. We're going through and updated one because the one you have right now is not the one that we have. Because every year since I got here, when we do the annual report, we update it. So right now, we're working on what is the accurate information and getting it to that front page. So people don't have to go, well, employment opportunities, well, it's not really an employment. And then click, and then there's that list in there that is from the dinosaur.
Maybe that's the place to do it. That would be the third place, because this one's from under important documents. We have a different, very limited list under important notices.
Right, that makes no sense.
And then we have what you just mentioned.
Yeah, to your point, that makes no sense.
Okay, thank you. Then if I make a little more suggestion, thank you. And this is on, on the budget. As we've been working in the grants particularly, as we've been working in the Master Plan Steering Committee a lot, and one thing keeps coming up from survey respondents and also within the board and from other people in the commission committee, is grant writing. There's so many different opportunities. We've amended some good ones, we've put in some apps. On the other hand, we've just missed some deadlines, et cetera. I know there was talk and some rumors that maybe we're, we're trying to see about getting at least a part-time, perhaps a grant writing assistant somehow. I think that'd be very, very good. I would also like to ask specifically about our committee development block grant, which in the past, prior administration and TA, we had, we somehow with PBPC, I guess, fumbled completely. And we completely missed our chance for whatever was $950,000 that year because the application was not submitted in a timely fashion. And we got no, tell me if I'm wrong about that, but I think we missed out on that. Now we're on the new cycle.
And I think that was our glitch. I think some, some other town missed.
PBPC, we were going in with wear on it and they just didn't get it loaded, right? And now we're working with CMRPC. So hopefully nothing like that would happen. But my question is, what does happen? We had, they have these hearing sessions for what the town, how they might prioritize different needs in the town. In creating the application for this, the one that we just were awarded was for Highland Terrace Infrastructure and the planning part of Gilbertville Memorial Park.
That's, yes.
So we had a hearing, you did a hearing a couple of years ago on that. And I don't know how many people attended, I'm just interested in the process. And perhaps if capital planning, as they line up all these priorities and all these different needs that we have, would also be for somebody looking at a different column that was, these are possible funding opportunities and match them up everywhere that's possible and see that we don't miss any deadline, and maybe can get some, get some assistance.
Good idea.
Mr. Chair? My address is last. So yeah, you're right. There's more grants out there than we have the bandwidth for. That's why we rely heavily on, you know, CMRPC and working with them has been great. We are in the middle of the, of the CDVG Highland Terrace and Memorial Park project. We're having a public forum for the Memorial Park project here in this room on October 22nd. So everyone in Gilbertville is going to be getting information about that. It's on the website. There's a brief survey for that. Ideally, down the road, and I, we might have had this conversation already, but we do need another staff person. Ideally, I would be focused on conservation needs, planning needs, and, and, and grants, especially when it comes to community development and that planning aspect. We have, we have some great volunteers, as you know, but they don't want a full, they don't want another full-time job. So that is something that we're looking at. I meet with the finance committee chair monthly, so that is on his radar. So for the next budget cycle, we are going to be looking for, for a person for that. To do that, we have, you know, we have volunteers working extremely hard in conservation out almost weekly. We, you know, you've put in a lot of time as the chair of the planning board. And I, we do need some help with grants because right now it's me and Kevin, it's chief, me and Chief Landine. That's it. And CMRPC. So obviously with the bandwidth, there's only so much we can do. But ultimately, one of the charges of the capital planning committee is the priorities of the town. And that would be the list that when it is, when we see grants pop up to be like, oh, well, this is number two on the list, like we should apply for this grant for this task. So I think we're getting there. Or it's not quite there, but we're getting there.
If I may ask, what's the cycle, the next cycle for CDVG?
So we are in the, so the Highland Terrace Memorial Park is in 2024 and we can apply over two years. So we'll be probably applying in 26.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Approval of minutes, August 11th, 2025. I want to leave, I have a copy of it.
Nope, I'm just, I'm still waiting, Mr. Tinker, that you had some revisions that you wanted to send along, so I can put it on the next agenda.
Yeah, but that was August 11th, we addressed that in the last meeting. It was the 9th, I think it was June 9th meeting. I, I have my notes.
Okay. Whatever, whatever minutes we're missing, just send me.
Okay.
So I can get your revisions and get them on the next agenda.
Okay.
Okay, appointment, Patricia Tinker, Historical Commission.
I'll move to appoint Patricia Tinker to the Historical Commission.
I'll second. Well, you can't.
No, 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 no.
Well, how is it a conflict? Are you married to her, aren't you? Yeah, but it's not like a, all right, you have a, no, no, that's all right.
It's okay.
Just being careful.
Okay.
I'm in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You say aye?
Yeah.
Okay, aye.
Mr. Cole?
Someone tell us who is actually on the Historical Commission and how many vacancies there are for these three maids mentioned tonight?
I'll look it up and I'll get that to you.
I, it's Jeff, myself, John Patraglia, Cheryl, and Trish. And in the past, we've had five? Or did we at one time go seven and then said, oh, no?
We had seven at one time.
And then we're like, that's ridiculous, so we're going back to five, right?
I can grab it. I have it, but that's not, that's not the best.
Okay, please.
Well, we've been operating under a.
Old information.
Old information, maybe.
You, Cheryl, me, John Patraglia, and, oh, it's names, isn't it? Jeff. Hello.
No Peggy Hanon anymore?
On the agenda.
No, she dropped out.
But there are three, three names still there.
Are you going to continue this thing on?
I, I'd like to. I would, right now I am the chairman and I'd like to step down as chairman because, hence, because I get busy. I didn't schedule, I haven't scheduled the meeting and why, so.
It hasn't been any reason to schedule.
Yeah.
So this is according to the town clerk, Penny Hanon, Jeffrey Schaaf, John Patraglia, who's up for reappointment this year. And then Emily Bankup is no longer with us. And Liz Siren, who has not been reappointed since 2024.
Because, why do you? Penny, Penny stepped down over a year ago.
Over a year, before your sister passed.
Before my sister passed, so, and that, so that's like, a year ago.
Not on file with the town.
It isn't.
What?
True.
Not on file with the town.
Okay, well.
We have a, an appointment, Ryan Wittes would like to be appointed to the Historical Commission.
Who have the extra seat.
Well, you know, and, and I, I like Ryan very, very much, but we, we have a problem here in town where we have a lot of people, you know, joining in lots of different open spaces, which is, which is good. But I, haven't we been hearing from Ryan about how busy he is and that he doesn't have time to do this and he hasn't got time to do all of his duties with town clerk? You know, yeah, the Historical Commission is a very low-key situation, but, you know, Jeff has sat there and said he doesn't want to be chair anymore because being a selectman is too much along with that. So I, you know, I'm just bringing it up.
Well, thank you.
Does he have time to sit on the commission?
He's asking, so he's kind of a grown-up.
Yeah, no, I mean, just, it was a, it was a question that.
How many people are we going to, are we going to overstaff the Historical Commission if we go with these three applicants?
District Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, we don't have a request for a reappointment from Liz Siren on record with the town.
Okay, well, it's, would you like to give that to us, please? And we'll be saving a place for you if we do this tonight.
Shall I hand it to you now?
Could do it through, yeah, for sure. It's open now.
All right, so then we get back to my original question. How many seats do we have on the Historical Commission? Available? Is it five?
Hypothetically, if, if the board voted on all three of these people, it would be fully stacked. Because we have not received a reappointment request from Liz Siren. But if she is going to request to be reappointed, then we don't have.
Then we're one person short, one person over.
She just mentioned that Penny stepped down. And Mr. Penny is one of those people occupying a seat.
We don't have that on file with the town. The onus is on the individual who wants to be on it or off the committee. We don't have anything from this person.
But you're counting Penny as ahead right now?
Yes.
When is, when was her appointment up? Because she was, she was appointed before meeting, so she should have been up.
A long time ago.
A long time ago.
I would recommend that we reappoint Liz Siren and reappoint Ryan Wittes and John Patraglia.
All three at the same.
Just.
I'll make that motion.
Just an idea. A second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Discussion and vote on Jeffrey Smith open meeting law complaint. Would you like to go over this again, or did you get your say said, or?
I laid it all out in the complaint. I'm concerned that, that this is going to be dismissed because of the decorum stuff and not look at the substance of the vote not being authorized. What does the board have to say about this?
The vote you're talking about is with the auction company?
That's right.
Okay, that's in the works. And not prepared to talk about it tonight. But by the next meeting, there should be some resolution there. So then you can, if you can make it work and you'd still like to complain, I don't know.
I'm not sure what you mean. I don't think that you can unring that bell. That contract was signed in August of last year.
I, I'm not going to discuss it right now.
But it's on the agenda.
I assumed that your open meeting law complaint was the one that I received with Justine recently.
Yes, that's the one.
Okay. I'm not prepared, so I'll put it off. And then table this for the next meeting?
If I'm not mistaken, you only have so much time to address this before. I don't believe you have time to wait until the next meeting. you have time to wait until the next meeting, or you'll be outside of the, the deadline.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, he is correct that there we have a deadline, we need to submit something, I'm asking for a vote from the Select Board on the response, it does not constitute an Open Meeting Law violation, and that is outlined in the draft response, so I'm asking the Select Board for a vote to submit it to Mr. Smith, and we'll go from there, and we'll see what the state says.
Because I read through the complaint, I didn't see any, I, I don't see where that is, what he was complaining about is an Open Meeting violation. I'll make a motion that we, that that be our response.
A second. Discussion.
Yeah, I mean, part of the Open Meeting Law Complaint was, who authorized Justine to sign this contract?
It's not an Open Meeting Law issue.
It's not?
Nope.
No.
Okay.
How is that, explain to me then, Bill, how is that an Open Meeting law? I, I, and I'm not saying right or wrong, I'm just saying, it doesn't make sense to me.
Well, saying, okay, there was a vote taken by the Select Board, right?
Mm-hmm.
Well, when? And it was never addressed, it was never voted on, it was never put on an agenda.
Mr. Chair?
And now we have an authorized contract, and it was brought up at whatever meeting that kicked this in, so that's, that's the part he's saying, who authorized this in this complaint?
But it's that open meeting.
Well, if you're telling the public, we did, and you're giving dates, where, where is it?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the, the prior Select Board Chair at the time has said publicly that Mr. Tinker and herself voted to have that contract signed, and so did the Assessor, who's also said it publicly. Again, it's not...
That was in executive session.
Who, who was in there with, in that meeting, so therefore, again, this is not an Open Meeting Law issue, and we just need to move from there, and the state will, they feel like they're on a first-name basis with them now, so they will call when this is sent to the state, so either way, we'll have a resolution.
That's what I would like to do, is get it to the state.
Yeah.
Okay. Get it to the state, that's fine, send it along.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fire truck update, we have a new fire truck.
Yeah, the question was, is that I, I thought that it was not legal to vote on signing a contract in executive session.
She's right, it's not.
That's not true.
That is absolutely true.
Show it to me.
All right, I'll let the state deal with this, this is...
Let's move on. This is...
Thanks, though, for your outlook. Discussion and possible vote on Kirsarge Solar Lease. I believe that Mr. Zini and Mr. Bazufka and Mr. Fleming and Mr. Commerford went down there, and there are some, no ideas about distances to the river, so this is still in flux. So I'd like to table this.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I just update the one-on-one thing? So Mr. Commerford and myself did hear from Attorney Blake today, and...
Wait, who's Attorney Blake?
Our Town Council.
Thank you.
Jeff Blake, and we are hoping for them to plug in the numbers in the new lease, so that's why it was on the agenda, that we were hoping we'd have it for tonight, but unfortunately, it's not moving as fast as I think either party would like, so we'll get that from you for next meeting.
So both sides are behind?
Yeah.
Okay. And discussion on Select Board Goal Setting.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. On the Kirsarge matter, I could see you were seemingly even getting close to a vote if this other information was there, and I'm hoping before that happens that you're satisfied and the people can be satisfied, and as I've said before, that the lessor, that's the town, does not give up rights to do what we might want to in the future with the part that is not subject to the solar proposal.
Correct.
Seems like about half the property. Back at the RFP in 2017, that was on the entire parcel. I don't know that this contract covers the whole thing, but I think the town would be making a potentially huge mistake to not be able to continue to use, as we see fit, the part that isn't committed to the solar project.
Correct, I agree.
Great.
Thank you.
And we have no updated lease agreement.
No, no, that's what I meant, yeah, right.
Still being worked out, though, we haven't seen...
On one parcel.
On one parcel, yep.
Good.
They're still working it out, and once we actually see it...
Before it gets signed?
Liz Siren, would you have something to say?
I just want to know if before that, that lease gets signed, does the general public have an option to weigh in?
Except that we're not beyond where we deal with it in open meetings.
Um, well, no, I'm just saying, is, I mean, that, would...
Do you want to have a forum? I don't know, what are you asking for?
Well, I, you know, let, let the general public sit there and read the contract and see if they find, you know, something in there that they feel would be not necessarily behoove the town a hard look down the future, or bring up concerns or whatever, just for the general public. We've got a lot of smart people in town who can find errors, so that was just a question.
That's a good idea.
Thank you.
Mr. Cole?
Thank you, last point by day, thank you. I think I've heard and read that a town, my gosh, cannot lease land except with the permission of the town, therefore a town meeting article at some point.
Mm-hmm.
I think that signing a contract in advance of the lease, I don't know where, where those things fit in, but at some point, the leasing of that parcel would have to be approved by the town, or not, by the people.
Yes, and it was prior to the RFP being issued in 2017. Yep, it absolutely went to town meeting, I can get you that date, but yep, it actually absolutely went to town meeting.
That it would be leased without knowing what the contract would be?
Um, to lease that parcel, parcel 14, yep, it was in vote on at town meeting before the RFP was issued in 2017. I can get you the date and that information. Yep.
I swear to see, Mr. Chair, last thing.
No, no, no.
But listen to this.
Our, our, our...
Our bylaws, our bylaws do indicate that solar installations have to go through, even in the industrial area, in the industrial area, site plan review. They also indicate that anything, it just says municipal uses, those go through site plan review. We, as a planning board, haven't seen anything except to know that from the history about the RFP and the early interest by Kirsarge, nothing since. I'm just wondering, is, is, is the Board's feeling here that, that this is going to completely bypass zoning and a, and a site plan review on a, on a large solar installation?
I, I don't think of it that way. I think this has been going on as safe since 17. Harry Commerford has been in it in deep all that time, and he's, he's, uh, there you go.
Mr. Chair?
Stop, please. Your Board has been dealing with this, and I would have thought that Harry had a lot of input in the solar stuff, and I don't think we're at a place where we're ready to do a site plan review. I think that's what I need to see is little flags fluttering on the ground so that we're sure that we're in the right place, and that's still, that's still being determined, so I don't know how we're up to speed, if we're up to speed 100% on this stuff, but I'm pretty sure that we'll do it correctly. I don't know, is that an answer?
It is.
Planning Board is what I was looking for. Every once in a while, I get stuck looking for a single word. It's the Planning Board I was going to talk about, but thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have the town meeting vote date.
Thank you, could you share it with us?
March 9th, 2015.
Okay, 2015, 2015?
Yes.
And they've been logged, huh?
Okay. Anything else?
Um, just a quick question on the solar, wouldn't that be on the DC, like, Kirod Solar, go to the Planning Board and get all this, yeah, everything you're talking about?
That's exactly what we're...
Yeah, the site plan review?
Right.
And all that? Yeah, okay. Did this not already happen, like, prior to 2017?
I don't...
I, I know we're going back a ways.
Yeah, but I don't think there's anything to base it on at this point.
Well, there's not a clear plan for a footprint.
Exactly, so there's, there's nothing to reveal at this point.
I mean, we have to decide, we, we have to decide how much ground this is going to take up, and that's in relation to the playing fields, and it's in relation to the bank that is mined for sand and gravel.
Yep.
I'd love to see it, the whole arrays at the level that Marty has now, where he started his pile of, of spoil to save, but that would mean that we'd have to take all that material and put it somewhere else, so that maybe isn't going to work, so maybe we sell part of it to cover the cost of moving it, that's a conversation I had today with Marty about it, so if people are down there looking at it, the timecom has to allow a given dimension off the water, so all that stuff is still, it's still in the air, so...
We'll start with the lease agreement, and go from there.
Whenever that comes.
Right, right, but that's step one.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you. If there aren't any more comments, I'd seek a motion to a Chair.
You still have...
Town Minister Report, uh, stuff like that.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Do you not want to hear it?
No, that's fine, I just want to, I'm tired, I'm getting a little confused here. So I'm just going to sit back and listen to the Town Executive Report.
Okay. I met with the Board where Memorial Park, to see what has to be done there, met with CMRPC on ongoing projects like the Townhouse Project, had a call with Stan Tech on the PFAS testing down on the wells on Lower Road.
And that, do we have a result yet?
We, um, we're, we have a call with DEP, I think we're going to be good for this year, next year is when we're really going to start doing the PFAS testing, so, it was a good call. Had a call of Council on Harry Commerford, the boiler has been inspected, we're getting our new, our final camera next week in Town Hall, and the old copier is also getting picked up next week at Town Hall. Attended a Zoom meeting for the Memorial Park Planning Project with CMRPC and Mr. Fleming, working on standardizing financial policies, so not only am I working on personnel policies, but now I'm working on standardizing the financial policies. That was part, partially the problem going backwards, and we're trying to make sure that the problems of the past don't repeat themselves. We held our biweekly Financial Management Planning Zoom, been spending a lot of time cleaning out town finances and benefits for benefit-eligible employees, worked with Senator Durant's office, worked with Bulldog, worked with Council on the financing for the fire truck, so we have a fire truck, yay. Advertising for a wastewater treatment plant operator, a highway equipment operator, a per diem library assistant, a van driver, and a town accountant. Attended Maya's healthcare cost forum, which was very depressing, and I already talked about working on Personnel Handbook. I attended the Massachusetts Municipal Association's Legislative Breakfast with Selectman Tinker, and the Massachusetts Municipal Association's Fiscal Summit also with Mr. Tinker. Attended the Fire Association's event at Harbok Winery, I saw my first burnout. Representative Berthie held his monthly office hours here at Town Hall. I'd like to recognize our treasure collector, Alyssa Ayers, who's been working with Bartholomew to move our CDs to a trust company to better management, manage our investments. I'm very proud of her, she's dug in, she's doing fantastic, and I'm really excited. Our, like I said earlier, the public forum for the Memorial Park Study Project is October 22nd at 6:00 PM in this room, and that is about all I have today.
Thank you.
We're still advertising for a town accountant?
Excuse me?
We're still advertising for a town accountant?
Yes, we are, yeah.
So, we didn't hire the one that you guys chose?
We did not.
Well, the ad just...
No, it sucks.
Yeah.
Right, thank you.
Which fault is that?
I don't know what, what to say, except that Mr., the gentleman withdrew.
Right, because he wanted to be an exempt employee, from what I understand.
There was a glitch, I thought we could fix it by going to that personnel meeting that, that goes, that personnel meeting that I did, I posted, and then withdrew when I found out that we're not able to change the job description without going to town meeting.
Okay, I, I have some questions for you, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
One of the exempt things lists the accountant, the FLSA, and it's, and I'm not sure if the date is exactly right, but it's from 2008, Ryan Hazard, he's, he's sent it along via email, listing the town accountant as an exempt employee, so why is that a deal breaker?
Because he withdrew his letter of interest, he backed out.
Right, my understanding, maybe I'm wrong, but, I mean, this is why I requested this beyond the agenda, so we've done this discussion, is, and for whatever reason it was turned out, I'd like to know, like, I'd like to know more about this, like, why, if, if a person is, the deal breaker is the exempt part, and we have policy in place that says the town accountant is exempt, so how does that break the deal?
If he chose to withdraw his letter of interest, if he decided that he didn't want to work for us, that's the deal breaker.
My understanding, my understanding of that deal, he was asked, he was asking to be an exempt employee, and that was being denied, and we have policy in place that would allow him to be an exempt employee, so again, how did that break the deal?
Mr. Chair?
If, if, it's, please excuse me, you should call him. I, I don't know how much I'm happy to talk about this on the TV.
Right, it's not on the agenda, that's why I requested it be on the agenda, so we could all communicate and have an open conversation about this.
But it's not on the agenda.
All right, so let's put it on the next agenda, and if you don't mind, I'll reach out to him.
I, I would appreciate that.
Okay, all right. If everybody's happy.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I'm sad that we don't have him working for us.
Okay.
Can't fix everything.
I can discuss the Fair Labor Standards Act, if you'd like me to.
I'd appreciate it if we didn't.
Okay.
And? Selectmen roundtable.
Um, I know you're tired, just one thing.
I'm, I'm really upset, so...
I'm not trying to upset you.
It's all right, I'm not upset with you.
Okay, well, I'm not trying to, so I, I just, I'm asking on behalf of the Board of Health on a, update on 810 Lower Road, you mentioned that you were going to reach out to the homeowner there.
The day after I said that, I saw them out there re-rigging the fence. The way I understand it, it's his insurance company.
Okay, so you didn't actually get to speak with him?
If it was, no, I haven't gone to speak with him. Again, the day after I said I would do that, I saw he had a crew out there re-rigging his orange fence, which I thought took care of the public safety issue, as far as the ugliness goes.
No, well...
So it is a Board of Health issue.
Right, so the Board of Health wanted, like, an update on that, and they're going to move forward on their...
That would be great.
Yep, no problem, okay. That's all I, um, I think that's all I have in time.
Anybody else?
No, I don't have anything for you. Don't look at me with that totter voice, Eric.
I'm not, I'm not, it's, there's been a lot of stuff in my private life, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay.
I'm on edge, so... I'm on edge, so, so, what do you want to do now?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second. On the favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, gentlemen. Thank you, ma'am.